I'd like to follow the order of the regular meeting for the Elgin Community Schools Board of Education on Monday, July 22nd at 7:00 AM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
William Brady.
Here.
Phil Clark.
Here.
John Highstreet.
Here.
Jennifer Baker here. Nicole Emery.
Here.
Andrew Gulew.
Here.
Janice Pascoe.
Here.
Mr. President.
Thank you. Before we get started, I would like to propose an amendment to the agenda to remove item 7.a. through policy manual adoption, just because not all, everyone has the same info in the copies. So we will continue to have the informational item discussion about bullying policy and all of this will defer voting until next month, just to make sure we have time for due course.
Support.
Support it. Any questions, concerns? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Right, that passes. And with that, Mr. Lotoz, I will turn it over to you for our 2024 IBC.
Yeah, and I'm gonna be very brief before I turn it over to Michelle Landrum this evening. And just again, as I look at, look at the group over here, this is, this is honestly the most I think I've ever seen come back in July. So I really appreciate you guys spending a few minutes with us, and it will be a few minutes, I promise. After your portion's done, you don't have to stick around or anything, you guys could take off. But congratulations to this group for all the hard work. You definitely have made Elgin High School proud, and we certainly appreciate the effort. We know the countless hours, and I'm sure Mrs. Landrum will tell a little bit more about that, but certainly do appreciate everything you do and the example that you guys have set for the rest of the student body. So thank you. Special thanks to Mrs. Landrum as well. I know personally the amount of hours that she spends all the time. You know, when she's not doing science, she's doing IB. And, you know, I'm sure that these folks could probably tell you the same, but really appreciate that extra for these programs don't run by themselves. Any solid program, anything like, it just doesn't work without having a leader like that. So again, thank you, Meesh, and I'm gonna turn it over to you.
You're welcome. I'm extremely grateful that, I live in this district, this is my home, I'm extremely grateful that we have this program because my child's coming through too, so. But this year was, as you can see, it was just an outstanding year. Every year I have lots of kids that, you know, go through the IB program, you know, they all leave footprints on my heart and, you know, I remember them forever. This group, they, from the time they were freshmen, like some groups just come in and they're super special, and like seeing them here like just kind of lit up my day, you know? I mean, I walked in and I saw Griffin, and even if just Griffin was here, it would have made my day, just because it just reminded me of the joy of teaching them over the past four years of their career. But more than anything, I want to recognize them. They all took at least one, if not six, IB test and were very successful on their testing, in the program, in their internal assessment, their extended essays, and they will take the skills that they learned from IB onto university, and I'm confident they will all be successful in whatever they choose to do. So even if you decide after a year college isn't for you and you're gonna go the trade route, whatever you do, you're all going to be successful. So if I can have you all come up here, please. Come on over here.
These are IB students.
So I'm gonna introduce to you each one of them, and kind of give you an idea of what they're gonna do next year is unless you change since the last time I talked to you, which sometimes happens, your like IB like diploma score sheet, it doesn't show up until the middle of September. So when you come back in the fall, come see me and I'll give it to you. But I do have a little token, and now I don't have to mail them to you because you're here. I'm gonna start out with Griffin. Griffin is attending Grand Valley, and you're majoring in bio medical.
Molecular biology.
Molecular biology. So we're super excited. Congratulations. And after I introduce you, you have to go around and shake everybody's hand. Skyler was a full IB diploma candidate, and she is going to Michigan Tech, right?
Yeah.
There you go.
Congratulations.
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 Good job.
Cindy was also a full IB diploma candidate, and she's going to Calvin, is it Penn College or Calvin University? Okay, they keep changing. And you're majoring in.
Congratulations.
What did you have on the picture before? Like, there's something there. Ally is going to Grand Valley, and she's majoring in.
Yes, yes, I do.
Liam is also going to Grand Valley, and you're majoring in.
Congratulations.
Biological. Amanda's going to Calvin University, and you're majoring in biology. I know something's there. Casey is going to Central now, right? So you got to meet her at the last minute on Travis' scholarship. We're very proud of you. Casey was also one of our diploma students, and you're majoring in pretty much.
Yeah.
Okay. Ian does not want anything to do with biology. He's going to University of Michigan, and you're majoring in business.
Congratulations.
And Thomas is going to Oakland University, and you're also majoring in business, right?
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
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 I want to thank you all. Okay, I want to thank you all for allowing us to present to you our IB kids every July. They do so much, not just academically, but all of these kids also contributed to the school, to Elgin High School, to Elgin Community, and, you know, I love to recognize all the things that they did, not just for themselves, but for other people. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I lied, she's gonna get a picture before you get to.
Yeah. So while they're doing the picture, we had discussed last, last meeting, and I did share this a bit with the rest of the board, when we get into like, as we're playing out business from here, when we speak, say your name, precede what you're gonna say with your name, first and last?
No.
Just first.
Just whatever makes you happy. I would pick it out whenever I have time to get out.
Quite a bit of laughter there.
Sometimes it's first initial, last initial.
Call me whatever it was, I was now late for dinner.
Dealer's choice, dealer's choice.
There's a song about that.
Is it like before emotion too, like anything like that? Before emotion?
And this is for the.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
It's mostly just so that when they're watching the video, and she did, she did Mass of Justice say that she viewed it, she appreciated it, she was very grateful. Oh, no, just that it was interpreted, she was very appreciative that it was interpreted. So whatever you figure out is perfect, we'll work on that.
Okay. All right, we ready?
Yep.
Phil, next up is consent agenda items. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Nicole Emery. I motion that the Board of Education approves all consent agenda items, including agenda, minutes, personnel items, treasures reports, and bills as listed in items A through C.
Phil.
Janice Pascoe.
Phil, any questions or concerns that have been moved? Supported? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Moving along, we have information, items, item five. First up is the through policy manual adoption.
So Alitoz Superintendent, you have a good portion of the policy manual in front of, in front of you, or have actually had it now for about a month. And I haven't heard anything, any feedback in terms of anything negative. I mean, in a lot of cases, they're very similar to the Neola policies and, you know, things that we'll have, like updates that you guys will get in August, because we already have one update package that's coming. Those are things obviously we'll discuss along the way. The update process is a little bit different, they don't have somebody come out and sit with me, but they connect me to an online video, and so I view the video, they go through all the changes, and it's an interactive thing where I can reach out to them if I have any questions or if we have to have any updates. So we'll always do that. I just think as going forward, because there's only, has to be through true one reading for our thing, I think what I'd like to do is when I get these updates, get them to you a month in advance, and at least put them on as an informational item, and then we can take action the next month. So that way, if there's any questions along the way, you guys can feel free to reach out on those.
Phil, I will throw out a couple of questions.
Yep.
Just the, there's new forms I saw in 3106, I think, like band booster forms that are in here. Are those official forms that we're adopting?
Those will be, yes, those will be official for, and it'll take probably a while to get used to using some of these forms, because we have to get them out to the groups, but once they're adopted, those will become part of what we fill out.
Okay.
Question, Gulew. If the forms are, if they're in the policy, are they, we used to have the policy and then there was the rule. The policy is the board's policy, the rule is the rule, is the rest of the information that administration can change, it's by administrative action. So if the form was in the policy, that's the form. If it's in the rule, the administration can make changes or add or delete things to and from it as necessary. So my question is, is the form in, this is the equivalent of the rule, or is it in the policy? And will it be online, like an online, be a fill-inable form?
In terms of the form?
Yeah.
I would, yeah, that'll be fill-able, yeah, absolutely.
So is, but is the form something that would be able to be changed by the administration, like in the rule fashion?
Or is it concrete?
Or is it concrete? We have, the board would have to say, okay, you can change this line from six to seven.
Well, since, I mean, since it's not a, you know, changing anything from the law, you know, I guess I would go to the, you know, what the board would want to see happen, what those, if those are things you guys, I could either do it through an update, or I could bring it to you beforehand if we're gonna make some significant changes. I mean, I guess two-way.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
When, when we had stuff, when we had things that were, that were in the rule, so the policy, especially if it had like a legal reference, that you have to have that.
But then, all the details of it that can be implemented by the administration were
the rule, which they could change as they needed to.
Right, yeah. And I, and I think it would, again, probably still be important that you guys would know that if there was something changing or something was gonna be different in that, so I would have no problem sharing.
Pascoe, I just would think that if you just put it as an informational thing, that we change this.
Yeah. No, that would make sense, especially because it's not something we would have to do.
I was just making sure that that was gonna be a possibility, so that, you know.
You want to be flexible.
That's all I have.
Clark, I do have one more. The, I noticed the cell phone policy is fairly generic, and I do feel like we've made great strides this past year with some of the cell phone policies, and, you know, you can use it while you're in transit, but not in the classroom and things like that. It's, that's not called out in here.
Right.
Do we keep that stance, or are you adjusting, or is the opinion now that was too aggressive or?
No, no, and to answer that, Phil, a lot of those, so that's the board policy, that's the rule. What we have in the student handbook would be, what would be beyond that, so more, more narrowed down, more fine-tuned, I guess.
Just like dress code was similar, right? It's high level, can't distract, can't this, can't that, and then handbook is where you get into the gritty.
Exactly.
The handbook is policy.
Any other questions?
Okay, so just kind of recapping, so next month, we will take action on the entire Truun policy booklet. We will take action on any kind of the updates that were in the July packet, which I will send out to you guys within the next week or so, so you have those available. I need to watch the video first to make sure that we have all the changes. There's a lot in that July update. Lot of it's just verbiage and wording, but there's some like Title IX policy, there's been some pretty significant changes, so I make sure that you guys all get that, make sure that we have it. And if you have any questions along the way, feel free to let me know.
Okay. Great, next, let's talk to the anti-bullying policy specifically.
So the anti-bullying policy, state of Michigan law has, has a partner that says that there has to be a public hearing, which will, today will constitute that. Any kind of specific questions or concerns about the bullying policy itself? And again, this is another one where our handbook goes a little bit further with some of this in terms of the discipline and that type of thing, but by law, this is what the anti-bullying policy would encompass. So today's the first reading on it, in essence, or our public hearing, next month will be the adoption of it. And if you look at it, and you look at the one that we had with Neola, there's not a whole lot of differences in it. Again, it's not so much the policy, it's what you do with it, what administrators do with it, what kids do with it, what teachers do with it, so. Questions about that?
I have seven questions. Favorite, E, section E, the annual reports, is that something new?
So.
I don't remember ever.
Yeah.
Getting to that.
We have, so that'll be something new for the board policy of it. We have, we've reported those numbers to the state for years, and when I say years, probably, this is a guess, but eight, nine, maybe 10 years that we've reported to the state. At the end of every school year, there's a report, and it's not only bullying, but it's, you know, numbers of expulsions, numbers of suspensions, all types of stuff that goes to the state, and that's part of that report. But with our policy, now I'll share that information with the board as well, and the number of bullying incidents and that kind of stuff, so, yeah, that'll be new next year.
Clark, any other questions? All right, perfect. Next is board reports, and I will start with two. First is reminder, training tomorrow at six.
5:30.
5:30, okay, 5:30.
And I'll have, I'll have pizza for us tomorrow.
Okay.
So if you guys don't have time before you get here, I've got you covered.
All right, sounds good. Do you have an estimated length?
Yeah, 8 o'clock is what they're telling me.
Okay.
5:30 till 8, but sometimes if you're on your best behavior and you go quick, they might let you out a little early.
Right, right, right. And then my second one is, we, with July being pretty busy and then fitting in this one, we need to have our annual mission, vision, goals, summer checkpoint, so I'd like to do that next month. I, was Tuesday a day that seemed to work for most? If we, you know, give me a, so you're nodding, nodding.
It's 20.
Well, I'm not saying, I just, like, most Tuesdays in general, because then we can collaborate and pick a date.
Janice, if we can just do it like around 6:00 or later, that would be best for me.
Six or later on a Tuesday?
On a Tuesday, yeah.
Yep, Tuesday, Tuesday, Tuesday. Nicole, your, well.
I mean, I'll do Tuesday, that's fine.
It's a robotics thing?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, then stay tuned, I'll try and target a Tuesday. Okay, that's good for us. Anything else? All right, up next would be Ms. Lotoz, superintendent's report.
Yeah, I gave, gave the administrators the night off a little bit, so. Ryan, Ryan in particular came, he was in the role of parent tonight, so I'm not gonna ask him to update anything, unless you got, you want to impromptu tonight, Mr. Melrose?
So band camp started today, the second kind of locker is already getting painted, parking lot's starting to get done, most of our positions here are filled, but I think with one kind of distinct question, other than that, things are going past by.
So I'll kind of piggyback off on a couple of those things where he left off. The lots are starting, they did the track, or shouldn't say have done the track, but they've started on the track and made some pretty significant progress. It's the same group that's doing the lots, so they've kind of jumped around, and I'm sure you saw it today on the way in, some of our trouble spots are getting addressed, and then they'll top coat the whole thing before we get back here, so that's on, on the move. Evan and I have been in pretty steady communication with the people doing the bleachers. You know, they, you get past the initial part of it, and then there's the, you know, what's the press box actually look like, and how the bleachers drain, what system you want to use, and there's a lot more that's kind of way above my head, but I listen a lot in those meetings, so I think I know some things about it, but that's where our construction manager comes in, because he has the right questions to ask, and so I feel pretty comfortable with the group. We've had, they're, they're very thorough, they want to make sure that we're getting the product that we want, and so I feel pretty comfortable with that, so that's, that's moving along in the right direction as well.
And it starts in October.
Still gonna start in October, correct? Yep. Ryan covered staffing here at the high school a little bit, so we did have some positions to fill, we're probably right where we need to be with that. It's been a nice process this year because his and then also at the elementary schools. The pools are getting a little bit deeper, you know, it's not like in the past where we were lucky if we got maybe a couple candidates and maybe we had to kind of settle, and I don't feel like we've had to do that at all this summer. I feel like we're, we're in a spot where we're, you know, pretty, pretty happy with what we're seeing, so that's exciting. I do think we're gonna have to go to a fourth section kindergarten, regular kindergarten this year, which is, it's good, it's a little bittersweet, it's good for the numbers, but in terms of budgetary, we're, we're starting to get into a position where we're gonna have some very low set class sizes in kindergarten, which is fantastic. It's fantastic for everything except the budget, because now you're, you're talking about an additional teacher, but probably a good problem to have, and I, and we have always talked, and the philosophy of this board has always been that we're gonna try to keep those numbers low, particularly in the lowest levels, so in your K and one, where they're kind of getting their feet wet still, that we're gonna try to keep those numbers low, and so we'll, we'll have that. But it's, you know, like I said, this is gonna be one of our biggest classes we've had in a while, and for us, now big is, if we're dabbling in the high 90s, that's pretty big, but that's, that's where we're gonna be, so I guess that's kind of a good thing. Leads me right into the budget. When we met last, I was pretty optimistic about what was going on in Lansing, and in a matter of about two days after our meeting, things really went south on us, and we ended up with probably the worst educational budget that we've had in the last seven years. Pretty disappointing, but not, not, I don't think the fight's done yet, there's been a lot of pushback from superintendents and districts around the state, asking them to reconvene and think about some things. One, one thing that comes to mind in particular was the 31AA money, which was the safety and mental health money, got cut by about 95% from, so down to 26 million from, you know, 300 million, and so 26 million, we don't get a very big share of that, I think for us, that comes out to like about, maybe $20 per kid, can't do a whole lot with that, but it was kind of disappointing all across the board. We ended up getting no increase in our per pupil loan, so we got zero, and they had talked about getting 250 per kid, and so it, it just was, I kind of felt like they were in a pinch on time, and they just kind of rushed through some of the last items, and we happened to get caught up in that, and, you know, disappointing for a year, hopefully they fix some of this stuff before we even get back in school. They are gonna revisit a few things, and I think as long as we keep the pressure on this district, you know, let them know that there's some pretty significant programs out here that are gonna get cut if they don't start, you know, backing things up, and, you know, we're in a much better position than most. This board has been fiscally responsible for quite some time, as a result, we are still sitting in a pretty good spot financially, and even if, even without the increase, we will be able to overcome, and we will be able to be in a good position this year, and it's, so we're okay for a year, it's down the road that I worry about when you don't get any kind of a foundation increase this year, and, you know, you're looking at what happens the following year, it gets scary, because we all know that that ESR money has all fallen off, there's no more incoming money, we knew that was happening, but we've prepared for that, but that coupled with no increase, kind of puts us in a little bit of a rough position. So again, we're, we're fine this year, and we'll be fine this year, it's just we might have some tougher decisions once spring rolls around and we start looking into '25, '26.
Gulew, the decisions that we'll have to make won't be anywhere near what the decisions we had to make when, when not only were we not getting an increase, we were getting cut every year for several in a row, and we did everything we could do to not have to sacrifice anything, anything classroom-wise. A whole bunch of other terrible things had to happen, but we saved, everything in classroom stuff was saved, and that's paramount. So yes, we'll have to make some tough choices, but it's, it's gonna be okay, because it's not gonna be as bad as it has.
Yeah, and having.
You remember that?
Yeah, having lived through that during, and I, and I know John certainly did, and as a teacher, you know, they are tough times, but, you know, I'm hoping this is a little bit of a wake-up call for, you know, people making these decisions in Lansing. If you look around at districts, particularly the big districts, and, you know, I look at the, read the paper, the Ann Arbor's of the world, and some of these are, they're cutting significant staff, they're cutting 50 and 100 teachers. We're not there, and, you know, we, we were pretty, I like to think we were pretty forward-thinking when we got that ESR money, and they were encouraging us to hire, hire, hire. We hired, but we didn't hire at a rate that we couldn't sustain, and so I kind of feel like that's right now where we're at, where we're able to live with what we have, again, for a year, and hopefully things get better throughout the year, and they make some decisions, and, you know, we're not in this spot next year, so keep our fingers crossed, and keep fighting the good fight, and keep talking to the folks in Lansing, and make sure that we get that money.
Emery, what about that retirement payment?
So the retirement payment is our only, will be our only increase. Of course, that was the money that, back in 2012, if you remember, when they figured out that the retirement system was broke, they took a chunk out of the schools that started paying that debt down, well, the debt's paid down at this point, so conventional wisdom would say that money would all come back to the schools. Well, it's a lot of money, $600 billion, and so what, what we've currently looked at is we'll give back, they're gonna give us back some of that money, so that's where a little bit of that increase, there will be a little bit of an increase, because we'll get some of that money back. In essence, we should have got every penny of that back, then not one penny should have been spent on anything else. That money was K-12 money, and it should remain K-12 money. Instead, we ended up with half of that money right now. That's the other thing they're gonna revisit and look at, Nicole, that what I've been hearing was, so it was a 7% chunk of money that equaled $600 million, right now they're talking about 3.5% of it coming back to the districts. Late July, early August, they're supposed to reconvene and talk about the potential of making that look more like five for this year, and maybe the full seven for next year, so.
Will that, does that payment no longer, do you still have to make that payment?
No.
is that a-
No, at this point, no, and at, at this point, it's, it's, right now, it's flush enough to where they don't feel that we have to continue paying.
So we don't have to make that payment, and we're getting a little bit of it back, so that will kind of help out a little?
Right, it will help. Anything else? That's all I got, thank you.
All right, thank you. Clark, any visitors in the room?
No.
All right. None, bringing us to our first and only action item then, for the elementary English Language Arts Curriculum that we had reviewed a couple months back, would anyone like to make a motion?
Pasco, I'll motion that the board approves the English Language Arts Curriculum, the grades can herd and through fifth grade from Amplify as presented for the amount of one hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars and sixty-four cents.
Support.
Just wanted to, uh, you know, I apologize that, 'cause usually we do a presentation and we're in a position to take action, and nobody, I didn't have any questions come in on this, so I don't want you to think it was put off for any other reason than an oversight. What happened was, we generally hired, or we, I'm sorry, we generally purchase, make purchases of this size after July first, because that's when, you know, the fiscal year starts. We did the presentation, I think it was in April, board took action in May, and, or, I'm sorry, the board was informational item, we never got it to an action item, and then it was kind of out of sight, out of mind, and then when Melissa went to order it, and we realized, we don't have board action on this yet, so, that's why I emailed you to let you know that even though we hadn't taken action yet, that I'd like to move forward with the purchase, and so, tonight makes it official.
All right, Clark, any other questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Clark's support, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that passes as well, have a great evening.
See everyone tomorrow.
Yep.